We're going. All right, so let's get it started tonight. Brian will not be with us tonight as he is hanging out in DC, so it's the rest of us here. And with that, let's say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, Vance, you want to get up to the microphone and give us the minutes, please?
We met on June 5th. Corey and John were absent. Pledge was recited. Councilman chaired the meeting. Councilman Schmidt moved with a second by Dave to approve the May 15 minutes. All were in favor. Councilman Schmidt moved with a second by Dave to approve the consent. Councilman Fenlon moved with a second by Schmidt to approve the regular agenda. Monthly police report was presented by Deputy Castle and Deputy Cole. Kelly Vista was present to discuss Sunday opening. He will be allowed to begin new hours starting at 11:00 AM as per state law. Dino from Star Fireworks was present to discuss a fireworks display. The time and date at this point have not yet been confirmed. Brian moved with second by Dave to create a $50 minimum fine by resolution for fireworks violations. All were in favor. Greg Lans was present to discuss his property south of the cold storage building. He will work with Councilman Fenlon to discuss a possible purchase. Rachel Caldwell from Jubilee Equine was present to discuss a possible joint venture with the city regarding waste from their facility west of town. More discussion to follow. Onsted Twitchell, the first reading to rezone SAR addition from SR1 to R1, approved by first motion from Dave, second by Brian. Preliminary plat for Lost River 3rd addition approved by first motion from Brian, second by Dave. First reading to rezone Lost River 3rd, R6, approved by first motion from Brian, second by Dave. The resolution to rescind the original Olivia's Acres from 2016 for Olivia's Acres, approved by first motion from Fenlon, second by Brian. The first reading to rezone Olivia's from residential estate R2 to R6 on the south end, approved by first motion from Dave, second by Brian. The preliminary plat at Olivia's, approved by first motion from Brian, second by Dave. The second reading to rezone South Acres 5 addition from suburban residential to residential estates, approved by first motion from Dave, second by Brian. The green earth landscaping issue is no longer a concern as per Mr. Croker. Resolution authorizing issuance of the revolving bond fund of 216-3 approved by Dave, second by Brian. Street Improvement District 217-4 was tabled. Street Improvement 2017-5? Do I have to read these?
No, we'll just say it. We did all that.
Lucas wrote it for me, so I know it's right.
Okay.
Let's go to Interstate Engineering.
There you go.
Dave Fenlon moved with second by Brian to instruct Interstate Engineering to move forward with the cost estimates for 8th Street. Dave moved with second by Brian to have Interstate move forward with the funding operations, options, excuse me, for the water meter replacement project. Brian moves with second by Dave to instruct Interstate to prepare plans and specs and advertise for bids for 217-2. The change order for 216-3 approved by Dave, second by Brian. Dave moved with a second by Brian to instruct Interstate to prepare costs for a pedestrian crossing near Casey's and the school. Portfolio share in volunteer beer was postponed. She's working on tracks to trails. Brian presented a proposal for increase in water rates. We're still working on that. Dave Fenlon, 27 resumes for assistometer. Deadline was June 15th. For, excuse me. Deadline for tax assessor was moved to June 15th. John absent, Corey absent. Perry, monthly report and building permits, zoning map should be updated according to his opinion there. Adam, he's got issues with the weeds in the subdivisions. And I think we sent a letter to the developers on that. We'll talk about that later maybe. And we're working on repairing some of the streets. Auditor Schmidt moved with second by Fenlon to renew the liquor beer license at Big Erbs and Casey's. The meeting dates for July will be the 10th and the 24th. City offices and City Hall will be closed on July 3rd. That's Monday. We adjourned at 10:35.
Perfect, thank you. Vance, have you got any corrections or additions to that? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as read.
Motion.
Okay.
Second.
Motion, Dave, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. All right, do everybody have a chance to look at the consent agenda that's got sent out here? Anything on there Vance that you were, any issues with or anything you want to talk about?
No, I'm good.
All good?
Okay.
Anybody up here have any?
No.
I don't see anything on here either. It looks like ordinary things we've got to take care of. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Hey, John, can I get a second?
Second.
Sharon does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Corey?
Yes, sir.
I missed something. We need to approve the regular agenda. I forgot that.
You're right.
In fact, can you scroll up a little bit someone?
Can you scroll it up a little bit?
There's, I think there are actually two additions to that.
Yeah, and I got, that's, you're right.
So let's do, let's do 4A as the approved and regular. We're going to add the South Acres 5th addition final plat.
Okay, hold on here.
South Acres.
Do you want to call that one 4?
Where does that go?
Under Onsted Twitchell?
Under 4, no, it's got to go under 4A there. Or do you want it under yours?
It is already, isn't it? I have it on this one.
Yeah, but I didn't get it here. Scroll up a little bit.
So it's South Acres?
It's not on there.
Which one?
We need to add South Acres 5th addition final plat and we need to add Street Improvement District's update.
So that's under Onsted Twitchell?
Yes. There you got it. That's right, that's correct.
Mr. Mayor, can you make another addition to Onsted Twitchell, please?
Yep, it's the, want to add on Lakeview Heights 2nd addition. Here, I'll hand it to you. You can get that in there, Dave.
Where's that one?
Can't guarantee the order, so.
Are you, are you good, Lucas?
We'll do Lakeview Heights rezone, public hearing. Public hearing. Lakeview Heights 2nd edition preliminary plat. Public hearing.
So you guys can see how well I misspelled her.
Not going to say a thing, dude. Not going to say a thing.
Are we good, Lucas?
All right, there we go.
Okay, we're good. Mr. Mayor, we're good.
Okay, we got everything, though?
Yep. So we need a motion to approve the regular agenda with additions.
So moved.
Okay, Dave makes a motion, John does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Do we need to approve those additions then too?
No, it was the addition.
We got it.
Just making sure.
We're good.
Okay. Just making sure. Okay, so next on the agenda is Russell.
Okay, most of you may have heard that planning and zoning tabled the Lakeview Heights rezone and preliminary plat, largely based on what our long-range plan is for Long 76th Avenue, which was commercial along 76th. And what we want at planning and zoning therefore is what does the city council want? In other words, while the long-range plan is not binding on any piece of land, it's a guide. And I think, do most of you have a drawing of the proposed layout for the school?
Yes. Yep.
Okay. I want an official discussion. What do we want to do? Are you okay with the plat as it was proposed to us? Now, kind of hard to say that before you actually vote on it. But see, we tabled it because...
Right, to have the conversation.
To have the conversation.
Correct. So when I was looking at this layout. Quick, can we, so what was the concern is because you said commercial along 76th is in our district rate, in our long range.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
The one that we're in the process of updating right now.
Okay. And what you're stating is the city of West Fargo, the West Fargo School District has come forward with a change from that and wanting to put a school right up against 76th.
Right up on 76th.
Which would remove our commercial.
Yes, they, they have, if you'll notice, they have a large block of commercial along Connie Road 17 then.
Right, and that's larger than what it was in that, like I'll say a plat or two back, right?
Oh, yeah.
Went a whole different layout to this.
Oh, yeah, there's more commercial land there. The... All we're doing is, for planning and zoning, we're just asking, we want guidance.
Right. I mean, just from, when we're looking at this from the prior plat to this current one, again, like I said, there's more commercial space on the west side there.
I will also point out one other thing about this plat which is in question. 66th Avenue will more than likely be our collector street. It's probably going to be the only, that heads north from 76th. It's the old railroad bed, by the way.
Okay.
Goes up by the grain bins.
Mm-hmm.
Eventually, that one will more than likely go to 64th.
That is then in discussion with the, that's part of what we're talking about with the railroad to turn into pedestrian paths.
You're going to have a hard time turning 66th Avenue to pedestrian path because it exists.
The old railroad track.
That's right, but 66th Avenue exists now. You won't be making it a walking path. City can do anything it wants, but it's going to, that will take, that will take all access to Olivia Adelman's. Adelman's. And that is, that is already an existing city street.
You're saying on the...
So it's flat.
North.
North side.
North side.
It goes right into Adelman's.
No, the reason I'm pointing it out is, is because we're probably going to have a major intersection coming, Lakeview Heights coming up, which I can't tell from any of the drawings. It may not line up with 66th. There may be an intersection conflict. It'll have to be handled with lights or something else if it, if it goes in as it is now. Any other questions for me?
So you're saying that road is platted in that land zone by the city?
66th going north? Yeah, that's the old railroad bed. It's, it's a street. It's an existing street going north from 76th Avenue. There will be no bike path there unless it's, unless it's put in, in the easements. And that's, and that's very, which is totally possible.
Would be ideal because the vision is to connect that pedestrian pathway from, essentially from County 17, from the elementary school up along the railroad tracks to the new school and then continue all the way up so it connects into Fargo.
I just have one word for that and that's sweet.
I mean, that's because theirs is coming down, so ours goes up. You have that connectivity which is, I mean, it's essential. So whether there's a road at 66th or not, we can still have a path.
Exactly.
Somewhere.
Yes. The only issue I have is, is intersection conflicts which we're going to have, going to have to be dealt with some way or another.
But the question at hand is really the...
What do you want to do? What do you want to do with?
How much percentage of commercial quote-quote do we lose? Do we know of our total commercial in the city from this chunk? That would be, if we were to move forward putting it right against the street?
You're asking a question which I can't answer. We don't know. We don't know how, how big a strip we would have ended up having, having there. My guess is a couple hundred feet by, well, what we, what we're losing is the frontage of the school then.
Yeah.
Because there is going to be the commercial down at the west end of 76th.
Yep.
You know, when we originally do our land use, we're throwing darts. And we're trying to put things in where we think they're going to work. And then as schools come in, things change. And you take a look at the land we have on the plat for commercial, that's a lot.
It is a lot of land.
I mean, that, that's the thing. This, this ultimately makes sense. And when you talk to developers also, the small stretch we had going down 76th, is it really usable? Infrastructure costs are going to get out of hand. And how's it going to work?
Could I, could I shorten this up a bit by saying that the additions to the Onsted Twitchell makes anything else I have to say at this point just superfluous? I know it, I'm going to have to look it up. I can't spell it. Anything else for me?
I don't have any.
I guess I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you.
I agree, I think we should discuss it at the point where we review the plat.
Yep. All right.
Well, since we're discussing it, should we move that out and keep that going?
We're into interest.
Is that okay with you?
That's what I have on my.
All right, so let's do the rezone first. We can have a public hearing on the rezone.
Yep.
You want to, so I'll open it up, Lakeview Heights 2nd Edition Rezone. Open up a public hearing. Anybody here have any comments on, on that? I guess I don't really have anything.
I guess we have to look at it. What is, which one is the second? That's this.
Yep.
Which is not the school. Or is it the school?
No, it's the school.
May I add something here?
Go ahead, Russ.
The rezone, the rezone is for the ag land going to commercial.
Block 2 Lot 1.
So which, which one, Lucas?
Block 2 Lot 1, I believe is the only part.
Right, we're talking just this corner?
That's that commercial chunk.
Because the, the school can be built anywhere. It's ag land now, the school can be built on ag land. So the only part we're talking about is the...
Just the commercial.
Is the commercial, is going from ag to commercial.
So the only question that I have is how does this impact what we're talking about for a downtown? And taking commercial away from that area and putting it in another spot? And, and is there an impact?
Well, my perception is I don't see it as a major impact because it's probably going to be different types of commercial. You know, you think about maybe a grocery store or dry cleaners or, or a subway or something like that. And when we talk about a downtown, we're probably talking more of a destination related to restaurants and, you know, some bars probably and...
Novelty stores.
Novelty stores, those types of things. So I think it's a, I don't think it'll take a lot, but it is a good question. And depending on where we put the downtown, I think it would, it's a great corner that it would probably be beneficial to us as a city. That's all, that's my perception.
I guess that would be, what I would kind of conclude with that too is that there'd be a little different, different shops that would be there versus what would be considered to be a downtown. Just from what I've seen, like what's currently at Osgood versus what would be like a downtown Fargo or something like that.
You know, I think my concern is how it looks and, and how it's very large. If there's going to be a lot of stores there and we end up with another strip mall, there's strip malls everywhere. I don't know that that's what I really want to see when I drive down County 17. And you're used to seeing nice wide open and all of a sudden now you, you're going to have the same, what you see in Fargo, West Fargo, that's, that's not what I want.
That's, that's location for a grocery store.
Okay, but you're saying grocery store. Once you rezone it commercial, you don't know what's going to end up there. So we can, you could say, hey, I'd like a grocery store there, but I don't know that one is going to ever show up there. Right?
Not at this point, I'd be right there.
And, and so the best thing we can do if we're going to agree that if we're going to vote and say, yes, it's commercial, then we need to put some parameters in place what it's going to look like. Is there going to be trees along the boulevard? So that's not your view for, as you drive down the road that you see trees instead? I mean, we have to have some parameters in place other than a blank slate of here's commercial, poof, and just do whatever you want.
But I guess we can't state that kind of stuff right now because we have no landscaping ordinances in our, in our, in our city, correct? And those types of things?
Actually, there is an order, there's, there is, in the planning and zoning, there is an overlay district ordinance for how things look along the commercial areas.
So there is an overlay that would probably be applicable here.
Yeah, past yearbook?
Probably past before, I think. But I think that, that focuses on your main streets, doesn't it not?
Focuses on, on the, on the main commercial streets. And there is, actually, they have to bring, bring a plan, not just of, of, a site plan, but it's a site plan that has to...
Of what the building looks like, what materials they use.
Sure.
Materials are. That, that comes through, that has to come through planning and zoning.
Okay.
That's relatively new, you've never seen before.
Kevin, go ahead. Yep.
I'm Kevin Christensen with Paces Lodging PRG. I guess I've had this land, just for a little history, maybe 16, 18 years I've owned this property. And we went through and got Lakeview Heights approved as a housing development. And we got this corner approved as commercial back then, okay? And we've been waiting for sewer solution. So along comes the city of West Fargo, West Fargo Schools, which is awesome. I mean, I think it's an awesome opportunity for the whole community. We're not looking today to submit any plans at all for the commercial development. We don't know what it's going to be when it grows up. But what I do know is that we have 36 acres of commercial opportunity there, which we can do an awesome development in. It's not a small 200-foot strip of land that we can't develop. I mean, so we have more flexibility. So to, to put a 200-foot strip of land that would be commercial along 76th, to me, doesn't make any sense as a developer. I can't afford to do it. We've got double-sided lots. Here, we're putting it all into one mass and we can do a much nicer development for the whole community and be proud of what we do. And so I think the way we have it proposed now, getting the school in, we don't have a plan on what we're going to do in the commercial area. That'll all come in, we'll have more conversation on that. But today, what we're concerned about is getting the school site platted and ready to move forward. So, you have any more questions for me?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Perry?
I just had one question is what commercial were you choosing? When we say commercial, there's about three or four different zones. So were we doing a CG or a neighborhood commercial? What were we doing?
It was a neighborhood commercial. I mean, it wasn't in front of, it wasn't in front of planning.
Russell, what is that? When you talk about neighborhood commercial? Just, just to enlighten all of us, if you could.
20,000 square feet minimum, 100 feet wide. And small businesses.
Okay, just, it's more for everybody's edification as to what that entails.
Okay, neighborhood commercial. Established to accommodate the concentration of commercial-related uses to serve neighborhoods, the smaller areas of course. Commercial uses must be compatible with adjoining uses to not negatively affect the adjoining properties because of noise, traffic, general appearance. Committed uses, amusement places, food, bowling halls, athletic clubs, health clubs, banks, financial, bed and breakfasts, maternal, fil- filling.
What you said.
Yeah, multiple family dwelling units, residential units of five to 14 units. That's a neighborhood commercial. Professional offices for businesses and service levels, limitation, public buildings and facilities, retail stores of all types, including food, drug pulling and the like. It's pretty much wide open.
Now, Mark, I'll just ask you, you guys are, you have no problem having a commercial running up against your, the school plat where you guys are at here, right?
You talk about to the west of us?
Yeah, just making sure, you know, you guys understand too that they got commercial running up right against the school.
I, we've known that.
That was going to happen. Yeah.
Mayor Business Manager, West Fargo Schools. The school district has been aware that there would be commercial to the west of us in that northwest corner. In the initial, earlier versions of the plat, the property didn't go quite as far south as it currently does and we actually had property to the west. And based on some early conversations with planning and with the city, there was, we understood there was a desire to increase the amount of commercial area. What we did in conjunction with the developers was to try to figure out what that looked like. And in the end, the decision was made to preserve that portion against County 17. And then the school site expanded to the south to maintain the amount of acreage that we were looking for when we look at a complete build-out.
Okay.
So, Mark, I'm going to ask this question of both you and I think I'll direct it to Kevin as well. So as we move forward on this, then the responsibility to do a traffic study and have a traffic plan for this area because if we have commercial in that larger section and with the entrance to the school, both there on 76th, that's going to generate a lot of traffic in that area. And so I know that the school has, I believe you've agreed to do a traffic study as part of the plan for the school?
Well, at this point, we haven't really gotten a lot of direction, but we have in other school locations, not everyone, but when we've been requested to conduct a traffic analysis, we have done that. That for us is not a deal breaker. I mean, it's a relatively small cost. It gives us information, but more importantly, it gives city planning and the city commission information about what to expect, how to build the road infrastructure and the pedestrian access points and those sorts of things to accommodate what we're going to build there.
And so then I'll ask the same thing of you, Kevin, is that?
Yeah, I believe when we figure out actually what we're developing or proposing to develop, we would be able to make that future.
Yeah, that becomes a major concern for us, no doubt.
And if I might, when it comes to access points to and from the site for ingress and egress, you'll see in front of you a proposed layout. Keep in mind, that is not intended to represent what the school district plans currently to build. It's a representation of getting all of the amenities at a full build-out site placed on that property so that we know how much acreage we require. in order to basically accommodate a potential build-out. Uh, this site is a little bit larger than the site that we currently maintain for the Cheyenne and Liberty, um, high school, middle school. Simply because we don't have enough property at that location for all of the amenities that we're looking to put in. Um, we've got a meeting later on this week with members of the park board. We're going to have to get through an analysis with them of all the infrastructure requirements that we have and how we potentially can partner with them as a part of the, um, land dedication requirements, um, that are currently in ordinance to figure out what we can build, what they may build, and how that's all going to work together at this site as well. That has implications on the amount of property that we need as well. Um, but in the end, we're going to be looking, um, obviously for access points off of County seventeen and Seventy-sixth Avenue. Where they are placed ultimately and how they operate, um, does not need to be decided today.
And there's plans for a pool?
A pool? From the school district?
Yeah, just like Fargo House, yeah, with every school.
The school district does have plans right now for a pool. It's under construction as we speak.
Oh, I know another pool. Another, we're gonna need another pool.
It will be interesting when we meet with, uh, with the park board. I think they have some interest in water. I think it's at a different level than what we're talking about, but, um, but there may be some opportunities there, um, for partnerships, um, in either adjacencies to our amenities or shared amenities. Um, so that, that will be interesting, how that plays out. And I would assume we'll be bringing something forward, um, that involves kind of a recommendation from them with regard to their, um, their involvement in this final plat as it moves forward.
Okay, does anybody have any other comments on this? Otherwise, I'll close the public hearing on that. And then we'll go on to the Lake Heights Second Edition Preliminary Plat Public Hearing. I'll open that up for discussion. Does anybody have any discussion on that they'd like to have?
So, which one is that one? Is that this?
Lucas, any comments on that? Anything that you, uh?
Um, nope, same deal with this one. I'll just do the, open up the public hearing that way we don't have to notice it again, and then we'll just table it until Planning Commission has a chance to make a recommendation on the rezone and then the preliminary plat. And they have a meeting next week, so we can do it, put it on their agenda, and then it can go back to city council the following week.
Okay.
Or at your next meeting.
So, should I close the public hearing then and just, uh, send it back to?
Aye.
Go ahead. Okay, go right in.
Uh, I guess directing towards Mark, but my question to you is, uh, the size of these buildings, is this, uh, similar to Cheyenne and Liberty? Or, I guess I, just looking at it, it looks like the other, we're currently sure Cheyenne-Liberty is you have ability to expand if needed. You still have ability to expand if something like that came up, or what's the sizing of these?
So, again, the, the purpose of what's in front of you is the complete build-out.
Okay.
The presumption here is that there will be a point in the district's future where we will need three middle schools that are the size of Liberty, three middle, or three high schools that are the size of West Fargo High School and Cheyenne. Obviously, um, in the short term, we don't need buildings or amenities of that size, right? I mean, we're not gonna go from three thousand high school kids, which we can accommodate now, to forty-five hundred in a year or two. But as a part of the long-term plan, if the city of West Fargo continues to grow and the city of Fargo continues to grow and the city of Horace, um, grows according to your potential projections, we envision that there is a possibility to have those facilities the size of Cheyenne and Liberty.
Okay. There's one yet, okay. Thank you, Mark. So, anybody else got anything to add? You guys all good? Questions?
So, this has to go back to planning and zoning?
Yep, planning and zoning didn't make any recommendations, so I'll do it at their next meeting, June twenty-seventh.
Did we, did we answer Russ's question?
I was gonna ask that.
Giving that, giving that, giving that direction to them. I don't think we did. Did we, Russ?
Not specific.
Okay.
Should I close the public hearing first and then have his comments, or should we just do it right now?
You can close. I don't think anyone else in the public has anything to say.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing, um, on it. So, we like to proceed here. We'll send it back to planning and zoning. Okay?
So, then they'll make a recommendation, either approve, approve with conditions, or deny. And then you don't have to take their, um, recommendation at all. City council has the ultimate authority on the preliminary and the final plat.
Okay.
I would ask planning and zoning to recommend approval on this. I like the way it lays out. I think the commercial space works fantastically well.
I see nothing wrong with this.
I, I see the same thing. I think we need to, this is an opportunity to bring a school into our community along with our elementary school and really provide that type of, uh, I don't wanna say culture or whatever, but it just creates that strong community feeling if we have everything from an elementary to a middle school to a high school. So, I think that's a great benefit. I think the small amount of, uh, of, uh, commercial that we potentially lose, we can find other places, plus they've made a great concession to put some additional in. So, I, I think we can work around this and there are gonna be questions, assurance on related traffic studies and different things like that.
They have to work through that.
Well, I think from our
It makes sense.
I think from our land use plan, it's just a reuse of the land. Um, it, it's not less commercial, it's probably the same amount of commercial, but in a different
Yeah.
configuration.
Removing the puzzle.
Removable, yeah.
I mean, from, from the perspective of easy access to the citizens of Horace, you can't beat the location. It's probably as close to the middle of town as you can get. It's at a major, what would be a major intersection, so people can get there in both directions. You know, I don't see anything wrong with the location at all. It seems to make sense. It's closer to the, to the main road as opposed to on the other side of the school. So, I would be in favor of reconfiguring our land use plan to have commercial there and give people, whether they're from the church of the school, the ability to, you know, walk over to, uh, some sort of nice-looking commercial location that's there. So, I'd be in favor of it.
Any other discussion? Otherwise, we'll send it back to you guys for next week's discussion. Okay? All right, we'll move on to the next item that I've got here is, uh, your rezone. Second reading? As long as I'm still on the same page here. Yeah. Lucas?
Yep. Okay, so the next thing we have is Star Edition, and it's, um, lots two and three, I believe, and it's suburban residential to R-one. And you guys did the first reading on June fifth and you, um, approved it at the June fifth meeting. So, this is basically just a second reading to say that you're still okay with the rezone from suburban residential to R-one.
You haven't changed anything, have you? That's why I gotta ask.
Uh, no, a couple of you weren't here. The reason for the rezone is these lots existed before the new ordinance came into play. And when it came, they, they were automatically put in as suburban residential. They are not suburban residential lots. And, uh, suburban residential lot has to have a minimum of two-hundred feet of frontage. These have a hundred and fifty. And the reason I'm going from suburban, suburban residential to R-one is I also have sixty feet of trees on one side and, and, uh, that means we can leave the trees as they are and still build the house, build houses in there. Uh, my kids will own those, those lots.
He's okay with the tenants, so.
You think so?
Yeah. Anyway, that's, so that's why they're, they're going, they're not, they truly never were suburban residential. It's just, uh, you saw that kind of thing happening along Main Street too, where some of the lots were brought in under, uh,
Yep.
And we had, you have to change the zoning in order to, uh, actually make, conform to what it actually is.
Okay.
We just need a motion.
Motion and second.
Yep.
Motion.
Motion to
Second.
Okay, Sharon did the first, Dave did the second. All in favor of the rezone, say aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, Lucas, we got another one on the plate.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, the next one we have is another, uh, second reading of a rezone, and that would be from egg to R-six, I believe. Same deal where it was approved at your June fifth meeting.
All right. Go ahead, Jack.
Hello, uh, I wasn't here at the June fifth meeting. Um, my understanding was that you approved the rezone for the third edition. So, I'll, I'm here to answer any questions that you have. But, uh...
Is there any, is there any other questions on that?
Nope, he, he, uh, we, we discussed, uh, questions about the, uh, cul-de-sac and sizing and why he did it and those types of things, and Sharon had a number of questions and had some, so, no, I think, and they clarified everything pretty thoroughly.
And nothing's changed, so.
At least changed.
So, you guys got any, unless there's no more questions, I'll just entertain a motion to
So moved.
Hang on, who's, somebody's on first here.
So moved.
Okay, Dave's up. Dave first, John second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. So, now we're on to Olivia's Acres Rezone, second reading?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, another one. Second reading rezone. This is one where they went residential estate to R-two for a lot of the lots. And then residential estate to R-six on the south end. And then there was a couple lots that I believe you had to switch.
Yeah, on the southeast.
Yeah, that southeast corner stays R-two, or is converted to R-two. And so, same deal where it's just a second reading.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on that? I think we've pretty much gone through that one.
No, I, do you know, Lucas, if they, um, had had any follow-up conversations?
As far as what goes.
Um, with Brent, what we were talking about with the R-six.
They have not.
They have not.
We have not seen the final plat yet.
They haven't reached out to Brent. He will be in town next week if you wanna visit with him, Sharon, though, but he did state that, at this point in the process, what he said wouldn't really matter. It's so far along in the pipeline that, he said, I, I, I wouldn't, uh, say anything to, to stop it.
Back up again, what are we rezoning it to?
Residential estate to R-two for a majority of it, and then residential estate to R-six on that south cap.
Which is the south side, had lots that were gonna be between fifty-five and forty-five along the edge.
Then that, the southeast corner is R-two.
Was bigger, a lot of the year.
And Russ' last meeting explained what the planning and zoning thought was about on the other side. The land that's on the other side is close to the diversion, so you're probably gonna put other types of similar buildings.
Yeah, 'cause there won't be much to work with there.
There's not gonna be much to work with there.
Nope.
Unfortunately. So...
I don't know, saw this in planning and zoning, and we also met with them. Is there any other road issue out there, Russ?
Hey, second. Well, the, the, that south, that south road will have a cul-de-sac into the final lot on the southwest corner.
Yep. And they'll have to have that on the final plat.
Until there, until there's a, a, a true street connector all around there, because they have to have it for, uh,
Fire.
fire department and for maintenance.
Yep.
Hey, what about bringing that road, is it on the north end up to, that they're gonna have to finish that all the way?
No, no, but what, what we're requiring though is the, uh, their, their main entrance up there is gonna have to come in as a full city street.
Right.
All the way down to where enters their neighborhood.
Yeah, highway.
And, and where that road goes from there, it may not come straight south when it's, uh, when the next time over is planted. It may, it may very well be that that road will swing over and run through, you know, true, you can't determine what that is.
I mean, I, I suppose my only hope would be that they would be as creative using R-six as, as they are in Lost River and use the frontage, but still provide larger lots, which more in tune with what's behind it, but that's, that's about all I could say about that. It would be nice, but I, I don't know that that's what they're going to end up with. 'Cause that's my concern is
No, I understand. Anybody got anything else on this?
No, I approve the rezone.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Dave does the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. So, now we'll move on to South Acres Fifth.
We talked about first reading here, Lucas, or?
Um, South Acres Fifth Edition is just the final plat. We already did the rezones for this.
Gotcha.
I don't know, did we have the reasons for? I don't remember, but it's, uh...
This was this lot split.
Yeah.
One with
A glorified lot split.
Cause we had to make a Oh, that was south there, yes, yes.
Mr. Boyer's here too. Um, nothing has changed. And then I, I had the map I sent in to Brian today.
It's big though, and like, I'm hoping that we can try and find it.
But yeah, as Councilman Fennel said, it's just a
But there's, like I said, nothing's changed, uh, doing this, what it Okay?
There it is.
Yep, that's it.
Can you watch the whole screen again?
Did we?
Yep.
Dang it. Then why he does that?
Anyway, yeah, so that's, that's a lot, gonna have to two lots. Anybody got any questions on it? Otherwise, I'll ask for a motion to accept it.
So moved.
Second.
Dave, Sharon does the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
And then you let's talk to your, um, architect, or M-N-H-M get us a Mylar. It's a big one that the city council assigned.
I know, brought that.
Oh.
Thanks. Dropped it off.
Perfect. Okay.
So, we're good with that? All right. So, we got the next one, street improvement, district update. Yep.
Yes. Let's go with, um, we'll start with two thousand seventeen dash six, which, which is Chestnut. We, our office put that in the paper, um, to give kind of an update on how that works. We put the residential necessity, that goes in the newspaper along with a map showing the affected area. And then after it's published, um, the first Monday, then residents who are in that proposed boundary have thirty days to file a written protest with the city auditor. And then after that thirty days, then the city council holds a, um, a protest hearing after that. So, right now, we're in that, our thirty-day period starts today.
Today.
For two thousand seventeen dash six, which is Chestnut. Two thousand seventeen dash seven, which is Maple. And then two thousand and seventeen dash eight, which is Northwood and Southwood. And then I also exchanged an email with Councilmember May and discussed maybe putting something in the Horace Happenings that explains this process rather than the city, um, sending individual letters. Then we could just put it there and just explain the process. So, if residents within that, um, boundary, the district boundary, are against it, then they file a protest with the city auditor. And that way, you're
It would just be to get more information out to people so they know what's going on.
And it's two ways of
Yeah.
making them aware. The century code only requires, um, two publications in the Fargo Forum, so this is going above and beyond.
And we'll have Brian, all to work with Brian, make sure it's on the website too, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that's true. Another avenue to get that out there so people know.
And Facebook, we can, we can sit, we can push out information via Facebook to the link on the website and stuff, so.
Weren't we going to plan to have a public, a public meeting as well to discuss this? That's what we talked about at the last meeting.
You had discussed it potentially for one of the
The Chestnut one.
Chestnut one.
And so that's also my, my concern, same thing with letters, is why do they get one and then the other ones don't type deal? And I don't know, then it's just gonna become, or?
Well, I think the reason that we were talking about it for them was because part of the option to repair their development is full road reconstruction, which is much different than overlay and a couple thousand dollars versus what you're talking about there, which was like forty thousand dollars a household. And, and so the numbers are drastically different. The project is drastically different. Uh, the timeframe, that road would be at Uh, the timeframe, that road would be at commission is significantly different. And that would be the reason for making it as, uh, getting it out, the message out there as much as possible to letting these people have a say in whether they want this assessment or not.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's fine too, but then the next concern is, are you going to be able to do that within the next thirty days?
So we would have to have a public meeting?
Because your thirty day starts today.
Okay, but within that thirty day windows when that needs to take place then, it wouldn't be like, it couldn't be a separate deal that could be held later?
Because then, uh, I mean, I say after that meeting, then they would all get information, then protest it, then. You know, if you, if you miss it, then you miss your protest deadline. Yeah, and then it's just approved.
Yeah. So they are getting their say of no in this protest period?
Right. No, I understand, it's just more to getting the information out so people are aware of it. And after, you know, sixty days, for me, it's not going, I didn't know anything about.
Well, and that's.
That's my, that's my concern.
I agree, I think we really have to address it when you talk about that much money, that you're going to start assessing people. It's not, oh, we just put it in the newspaper and we're just going to do it, that's.
Well, then, like I'm saying, I think you should probably jump on it then. Try to do it before you get to the tail end of that thirty days.
I mean, like, can something be done in the next ten days?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm asking.
Fourteen days.
But then we also have to get the information to people to know about the public meeting to attend.
Right.
I mean, that's the other caveat to this is the window of opportunity for that.
So then that's almost like a, a, something on every door. I mean, there's not that many properties. I don't know, I mean, I mean, somehow, somehow we have, we have to let people know.
Well, if there's, so if there is this, this special circumstance, like you say, if it's going to be a lot and you want them to actually know well in advance, here's what's going on, and then maybe have options, maybe then your letter's not a bad idea, like you said, going door to door and saying, here's what's going on and there's a meeting, or here's what's going on, you can protest. So it's, it's totally up to you, the council, you guys are the governing body, you tell us what you want, but I'm just saying that thirty days started today.
Yeah, I agree with Sharon that if we can do a meeting and we can work it out, I think we should because it is a very specific and a very large one. I, I stated in Maple Grove in our district, and I need to get some of it from Jimmy, I would send out, because we have a, I have all the emails and all that from all the residents and then I can send it out with the reference and what it's going to cover, so at least they can get the information additionally, plus then they can determine if they want to protest or not.
So my question back to you then would be, you got three different issues going on here. Should they be held as three separate public meetings? Or is this like a one, everybody comes in and has a conversation about their specific deal? Or is this strictly just Chestnut?
Are you talking the protest hearing, or are you talking about this information?
The thirty, the thirty day clock starts on all three of these, right? Okay, so that's what I'm saying, do we hold those meetings as three separate public meetings? Or is this all in one, well, everybody gets in a room and we go through these one at a time?
I guess I don't know how many people would be here type deal, so.
I would, I would say contentious, I would, yeah, I was going to say the Chestnut one is just, it's a very dramatic one. I think the other ones are maintenance of your facilities and we can figure out.
And.
I would think if you're going to do one, just do a mall, but the, the Chestnut one's going to do the big ones.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's why I want to make sure that we're.
Well, I'll add, you'll know before that meeting how many protests, because they have to file a written protest with Vance. So you'll know how many people are going to show up, because the protest that you have to have your written in. You can't just all show up with, at the meeting and say, yeah, we're protesting it, you have to have your, your writing into Vance before.
That's I think, if we can have it here so we don't have to go rent a room.
Yeah, I'm saying you're, you're going to find out how many people are protesting it.
But it, but it, yeah, it's going to come down to people knowing that this is, that they, that this is even happening. I mean, publishing in the forum does not guarantee that anyone's going to know.
Correct, and that's why you have horse happenings and the website's all in, if you want to do more than that, just let us know.
We wanted to get something approved, we need to get in there. My, one question I have is, this Chestnut thing has been on the agenda since I came on, Sharon came.
Probably before that, John.
I, yeah, but it's finally been started looking at, it was ignored for so long. My issue with it, and Jimmy correct me, maybe you don't remember, we asked you guys to look at this year, two and a half years ago.
Yep, and we did.
And you did.
Yep.
I don't remember any figure compared to what came out recently now, what's changed?
The scope of the project has changed, there's been a little more discussion with the major reconstruction. The first go around was more of a, what can we do to rehabilitate the road? And the second time now with more seriousness, we've been directed to do more of a, um, major type of a repair. Don't try to get just, uh, something to rehabilitate for another, say, five, ten years, redo it, you know? Um, I wasn't here when they built it and, and you just hear stories about what happened when it was in destruction, so.
And that's, that's going to be our issue, and I want to know how the city's going to react to that.
Well, I think I'll ask the question now too, is, is the city willing to commit any funds to this project because it's a major reconstruction? It's not an overlay. And, and I think it's worth asking, no, I, I was talking to the City of Valley City today, and we were just chatting, but they said that in their city, when they do major reconstruction, the city covers half the cost, and they assess out the other half. And I thought, wow, that's really interesting.
We're also on the history of this street too.
We do.
We accepted it, which we never should have done.
But we're, we're where we are today.
We are where we are today, so I would, I would agree with Sharon, is what can the city do?
So where does that, where does that funding come from?
That's bounder, oh, great, I mean, that's.
So you're just stating that, that half becomes taxes to the rest of our whole city.
So what they do is they use part of their city sales tax, and they also use a fund, they call it an R and R renew and restoration fund, that is part of every residence bill, it's infrastructure charges. And a portion of that monthly, say it's ten, eleven dollars per residence, goes into this fund and it's set aside so that when they need major reconstruction, they've got money set aside. Now, okay, we don't have that, however, that doesn't mean we should just say, well.
No, no, I, I just want to make sure I know where, where it's coming from.
We certainly need that going forward.
Either we do a percentage, like you said, of our infrastructure, because we've already, of the sales tax, but we know we've already taken a portion of that for the sewer lines. We can't, we can't, we've got to make sure we're not triple dipping or.
We're committing a lot of dollars.
We don't even know if we have any money there. We're committing a lot of dollars, so I just want to make sure I'm clear that this is a, it comes out of our property taxes that we're cha, that we're charging all of our residents and/or our general fund if we have money sitting there.
Comes out of something.
Think that would probably, if we're going to do something that massive, we'd have to be looking at a budget, uh, you know, something or another if we're going to get there. Yeah, Perry, go ahead.
Uh, I just wanted to comment that if you want to talk to me privately, I was mayor at the time when this project was being done. Oh, I got stuck in the middle of it, because it was kind of started when Terry Hayden was mayor and I got in the middle of it. And I'd be happy to give you any information you want to know, because there's quite a history on this road.
On the Chestnut bit, right?
Yep, there's quite a history on this road.
Oh, yeah.
So that's all I got to say, well.
So if we do this meeting, which I think is very good, uh, are we going to have a council meeting before then? Well, so I'm just looking at the calendar here as to what the timeframes.
I think July tenth is your next meeting.
Right. So you got, and you have July fourth week coming up here too. If I could, my point is, I'd like to recommend you give Vance some time to look at budget and see potentially what we could do for financing if the city were to get part of this. You kind of put a little bit more pieces together, so we go in with an accurate information to the meeting. Thing is, when, when would we need to come up?
Why wouldn't you?
If we did this, just throw it out there, if we were going to do halves on that, when would that bill come due to the city? We get this thing done, we know that.
We said this wasn't a project until two thousand eighteen, correct?
More than likely.
You could get it done yet this year. Yeah, okay, so it'd be on a next year.
I think it would be a next year's cycle.
So, really, why don't we just get the feedback from the residents and do we have to move forward with this right now and more prepare and come back?
That's kind of my thought, make sure you got a project to worry about before fifty-one percent say no.
Yeah.
Then you're just kind of spinning your wheels.
Yep. So.
Well, I think part of the conversation, I, I think we should know going into the meeting if the city's willing to.
That's the big thing.
Put any money in, because I think the feedback from the residents, if they see the city willing to make the commitment, I think that could change someone's perspective. You know, they're willing to make the commitment, it's important to them, maybe we should rethink it, we're not footing the whole bill versus the other way around.
So.
And I guess my other, only other comment, John, is if we're going to do this meeting, why not do it the day of our council meeting, but just do it earlier than that?
Would that be the best time to do it?
Well, it's not uncommon to do it like that.
Do it at six o'clock that night or something.
Make it an hour.
So the, six o'clock on July tenth?
So that's my suggestion.
Would this ever be feasible to get done if we had positive feedback? You know, everybody's going to say, if we don't do this now, costs are going to go up next year, which just, don't get me going on that. Why it costs automatically.
And the road's going to get worse and worse and worse.
Which is the biggest bunch of crap out there.
Well, and the road's only going to get worse and worse and worse.
Exactly, so how much more damage are we doing? I mean, that's kind of the prep that I think we.
Jimmy said the logistics to get it done.
I think just by the time you get through all of your, your design and all your bidding, and you lose a month just in your bidding. Because it's test, we advertise it twenty-one, fourteen days, give or take, by, by century code. So it, there's another, say, a month of just waiting.
How long would it take to do the work, you think?
I think it would take, um, not being a contractor, month and a half, two months. It's just, it's, it would be, it's kind of interesting in the logistics of, just because there's one way in, one way out. Or two ways in, two ways out, but it would have to be phased, and that tends to slow things down versus just coming in and starting at one and just looking their way around.
If you do a major reconstruction, I don't see that, to me, that's a whole summer with all the traffic stuff. I'd be, I bet it would be two to three months.
I mean, I, I would think if you did it, if you planned it for next year, at least give the city ability to figure out some funding and, and see where, how much money there is, but to say the city's willing to commit, we don't know.
From what I'm told, this project got finished late in the year, and I think if it was started this year, we might run up against that same problem, depending upon when winter would come. I don't know that for a fact, I'm just, from what I've heard, I mean, everyone hears things about that.
My sense is you're not delaying it two or three years, you're just saying, hey, the next construction season would be a primary time.
No, it has been delayed two or three years, and I'm disappointed that we have not done anything, and I'm as guilty as anybody else up here. That we should have taken this more of a priority, this is the worst place in common.
But I think that from a funding perspective, it's not uncommon to plan things now that are going to happen next year. I mean, that's very common.
I would agree with Sharon that if we state the city's willing to put some money towards it, I think that would change the, the whole residents' perspective of it and how can we make that work together.
Okay, well, first things first, we have, let's have that, well, we just plan to have that meeting, we have to make a public, that's got to be, that's got to be in the paper then too, right, Lucas?
It would just be a phone call, because it would be kind of like a special meeting, because you're before your typical meeting time.
Yep.
So Vance just calls into the forum and lets them know.
Okay.
The, the dates and then the.
So I would say too, you know, that it would, just for continuity sake, it'd be nice if we could do it on, at six o'clock on the tenth.
So how do you want to get noticed? Do you want our office to mail letters, or do you want to put letters on doors or?
Nice, thanks, John.
Just, hey, let me know. It's going to cost you a lot, I'll do it.
But I mean.
Can the city mail letters? Can we just mail letters?
Absolutely.
That would probably save us some expense.
So we got to make sure that everybody gets those letters done, and we're getting into that. Everybody being.
It's up to you, it's up to you guys, do you stick them on the door, mail them?
I think we put together a letter and between a group of, I mean, right, you, this group of us, almost people, we can just get out there and just.
Yeah, I mean, I don't care, we could do that if you want.
So you want me to draft a letter and you guys can just?
Yeah.
Stick it on the doors, stick it in mailboxes?
Yeah, I mean. So you're going to add.
We'll just fly out there for an hour.
Do you want to address, are you going to address them, or can we just hand them out? How you want to do it, hand them out? You go door to door and start handing these out, people are going to open them and discussion's going to happen right then and there.
Bring their door.
Which is exactly what you don't want.
Well, no, I, you want to be available in public, but we want to have it in the right setting.
I think you want to have them come in and answer all the questions at once.
They see it in the official meeting. Let's send it, let's mail them out, let's do that, because that, that way it just gets in their hands and they have time to have, contemplate that a little bit more, and then we'll have everybody here. Mr. Mayor, not trying to drag this out, but again, if we're doing this meeting before we have our city meeting, the question's going to come up. What is the city going to commit the dollars? How do we answer that? We don't know yet, let's get real, we don't know. I have no idea what we can do or not, we don't have a budget figured out for next year yet. We don't really want to sit and make any commitment to anything until we know where we're at money-wise, because we're getting a cut from the state. Okay, we all know that, you know, we've got to be very careful on what we're going to commit to here beyond what we currently know. That's my only thing. I think that makes it tough to have a meeting not knowing that. And I'm not saying maybe we have a dollar, but I think we've got to stick out there and see, we are going to commit dollars to this. But I can say that. But I also think it's fair, hey, don't go jumping no all over this, because A, we're trying to feel out if everybody wants it. It is going to cost dollars, we're willing to commit some dollars to it, but it's going to happen next year. So. And I'm certainly not saying. Percentages could change, I don't want to say that we'll commit thirty percent, when next year comes around, we can commit more. So it is, that's how we kind of present it, in my opinion.
Well, and I think as it gets closer, we finalize which of those options is the one we're going with. Because we, I think at our last meeting, we had three or four different choices, I mean, for everything from do everything to do nothing. And then you had a, in between, you had a couple of choices, and I don't know that, that, the meeting is not to make that decision. Meeting is just to get the residents input on, are you open to doing something?
Jimmy, I was here for last week, are you guys confident in what the options are and in what results you're going to get out of them?
Well, you're going to get anything from a rehab to a reconstruct, that's the options that were presented. So it's just a matter of, you know, you get sticker shock with the reconstruct, and we've seen that in the phone calls and, and stuff. So we retooled that a little bit and probably came up with something that'll be a little bit, get you probably to where a typical life expectancy of that payment would be.
Well, maybe we don't get involved in the rehab, if they just want to put a Band-Aid on it, well, if they could pick up the cap on that part.
That's a possibility.
They would have a complete rebuild, that's where we're willing to.
Well, that, and that's where you decide what percentage, because depending on what you're doing, you can commit, you can say, well, you know, a small portion versus a larger portion of whatever the decision is in the end.
So then you understand too that we'll be setting a precedence by that, is the sort of reason, you know? We commit to doing something like that, that'll be a precedent that'll be set, and that'll probably be something that we'll be dealing with going forward.
Valley City said they do.
It just, it doesn't matter, if it does, we're here.
Valley City told me that even when they do, when they do chip seal or re, resealing roads, it's a, they put in a third. The city always commits funds to any road project.
Okay, anyway, let's, let's move on, otherwise we're going to be on the way of just that. So July tenth, six o'clock, we'll have a public meeting, let's get the letters out.
So OT mails letters to Chestnut residents?
Yep. Okay.
And only Chestnut, or to.
We just want, we're just talking.
Only Chestnut.
Are we going to do them all, Chris?
Chestnut, Maple, Northwood, and Southwood.
I can communicate to Maple, Maple Grove, and then they can determine whether they want it or not.
Yeah, but do they want to be involved in the public media is what I'm getting at here, so everybody comes to.
Oh, I think I'll get enough feedback, and if I get a ton, then I'll bring that forward. I've only got thirty-seven, right? What did you say, thirty, thirty-seven houses? I mean.
It's not a lot.
I know, I can go talk to them personally as needed.
Just give me what you want for information to help you facilitate that, and I'll do what I can.
Description of what's going to be done, and then the total cost and the cost per, cost per resident.
Estimated.
And then I'll put a link to the public notice that's in the form.
Are we doing Northwood and Southwood too, or just Chestnut?
I do Northwood and Southwood if we're going to do that as well.
So just do them all?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, let's just do them all, uh, that, that way everybody gets a letter, and let's just get that done, all three, right?
Okay, you guys have one hour to get through questions for three different groups. I have no way, to me, the Chestnut one is going to take that whole hour and we're actually going to have to cut it off. So I don't think you're going to do right by doing one hour for three of these projects.
If the council meeting gets pushed back because of that, then, then it does.
I don't know if we can do that for here in time scale, we don't have a public hearing.
No, we can't.
We can't.
So, all right.
So do we start earlier? We start at five thirty?
No, I'm gonna make it, six o'clock is gonna be pushing it.
Because of the extent of Chestnut, I mean, that makes sense, but if.
You wanna just do that once?
Let's do Chestnut now.
Because the extent of the project, it's big, it's very expensive.
If Dave's delivery letters, if you're talking.
I mean, I'll send them to Millen.
That's a silver.
And then just do horse happenings and then the website for the other ones.
So what are we doing, Northwood and Southwood again?
Milligan over line.
Yeah.
Just Milligan over line.
Uh, Mister Mayor, one more question for Jimmy, when you talked Chestnut, was that also included work on Ironwood as well?
Nope.
Would that be something that would be worthwhile to try to include Ironwood, and would those people get assessed as well, because they do pass through Chestnut? And I know we don't determine assessment district, but are we missing some of that to spread it out?
Right now, it isn't in the district, and would you have to start over if you would include them in the district, Lucas? Ironwood, that is?
Because the map wouldn't be the same.
Right.
Gets in the paper.
It would be bigger. I think you'd have to start over, because right now, it just includes the the properties that are directly benefited by the road.
Ironwood people drive right through there?
They do, they do, um, as far as.
So is this something that was done in the past that should have been changed to include benefit? Does that make sense? You're saying it was two different districts?
No, what I'm saying is that the district has been defined for Chestnut already as being the properties right on Chestnut. And if we were, and that's been published, so.
I think we do the public meeting, and then if we need to go back and review this or check this, because we know this isn't gonna happen this year, that we will do that as a chest entry.
Well, are there any issues similar to those on Chestnut on Ironwood, where it would make sense to?
You think so? I mean, it's because it's just overly on the road, right, we're not, I mean, I suppose it's a subset, or yeah, okay.
What, which one? No, I was.
Ironwood.
Nothing, okay, Ironwood.
Are there the same issues on Ironwood as on Chestnut?
No, they aren't on Ironwood, because Ironwood is a rural section, so the water sheets off, goes into ditches, and goes away, whereas Chestnut is lower, curbing under, storm sewer, shallow storm sewer, that is. And in Ironwood, the city, between Vance and and Adam, have done some crack filling, some nouveau gap is what it's, a product that's called, and it levels out and seals up the transverse cracks, and that kinda really helps things out. You've seen on Maple, yeah, seventy six, yeah, it works well.
It's amazing.
And and that, I don't know what else we would do with Ironwood besides something as simple as a chip seal, I think that the pavement itself is holding together quite well.
But are they receiving direct benefit from work being done on Chestnut?
Well, they certainly, you certainly could have a case for it, I mean, there's a lot of them that go out that way versus going back and around all by the school. How much of a benefit, that's for the special assessment committee to figure out.
Tell them how much, they'll probably all be driving by.
That's they might very well, they might. Yeah, we could put a toll booth up on Chestnut.
Exactly. So, all right, so what do you guys wanna do?
Just have the public meeting for.
For Chestnut.
For Chestnut. July tenth, six.
Six o'clock.
Here.
Okay.
Who's sending out the letters?
We will make sure we send something to.
Lucas, you're sending out the letters into Chestnut, right?
We'll make sure we put stuff on the website for all three of them, and link to the public notices on the on the form, and we can try and send out to what we can.
And Lucas, you put the whole resolution in the paper?
Uh, the resolution with a district boundary map.
So you put the whole resolution, not not like reworded it, or a subset of it, the whole entire thing?
Yep.
Okay.
I have it here, actually.
As a public notice? Because I wanna make sure that I put it in properly in horse happenings, because I was trying to figure out if I need to reword it or not, and I was.
Do you want just the resolution that we put in there?
Yep.
Not sure, because we've never done those before, so it's a learning curve.
All right.
So, yeah, I could send you the the proof that the forum sent us. Or did I already?
I I, no, you sent me the resolution, and you sent me the map. And I can just, I can just look at it real quick, that's all I need to do, is take a look at it, and that will.
Look at this?
Well, whatever the proof was, just so, and I can then I'll just know what to do. Because I don't wanna do it incorrectly, which is possible anyway.
Okay, okay.
So I can send you the proof, and you just take.
Yeah, okay, okay, yeah, that one.
Okay, so the next, um, street improvement district that I have is two thousand seventeen dash five, and that would be the truck route, are we still good to do that, or?
We are.
Okay, so that's the one where we did two resolutions at our last meeting, we did the resolution creating the district and the resolution directing the engineer to prepare a report.
That report is attached to my monthly update that you have handy there.
So then, tonight, we would be looking for a resolution approving the engineer's report that Jimmy sent you, and then a resolution declaring work necessary, so those are the same resolutions that were done for the previous three. And now, um, if the council approves those two, then we'll publish notice in the paper for the truck route.
Third page, David. That's the start of it, and then, uh, this one is an interesting one, if you scroll down to about the second appendix, there is the benefiting map. And the way that this benefit map was derived was, I sat down with Ben one day, and not that one, the next one, I believe. Um, oh, I guess a couple more.
It's right here.
Yep, and, uh, uh, nope, there's one more.
Oh, there's one more, yeah, I I looked through this, there it is.
There you go, and that's a large area, and that is, kinda Ben and I talked a little bit about, you know, third is gonna see reduced truck traffic, fourth is gonna see reduced truck traffic. Park is gonna see reduced truck traffic, so that, there could be a benefit for all of them, and and John, this is kinda what you talked about, making sure that district is big enough, that if you drive down it or you receive it, that you're gonna get up, you're available to get a portion of that benefit, of that assessment. So like I said, this area doesn't have to get all the all, um, assessed, but I just wanted you to see this this benefit area as it is rather large, you know, maybe you would think that it would just be adjacent properties, but all these areas do benefit from, if the, we can pull those trucks off the residential streets, keep them on a truck route, get them back to the southeast corner of town where they where they wanna go, so.
But it also just is another exit for.
Exact, and that's what we talked about, yeah, if you live on third, and you wanna skip going down here and Nelson or whatever, just zip down there and cut them across, same thing for fourth, and even, maybe even somewhat a purview for that matter, but I mean, this is kinda what I wanted to bring to your attention tonight, was was something along the lines of this, so. Um, the district boundary hasn't been defined for this yet, I'll do that, I was kinda hoping that if you guys approve this benefiting, or if you agreed with this benefit area, we would draw the lines out for that and get it to, uh, the attorneys for for review, so.
I don't know that we get to decide though, but.
You get to decide the boundary.
Oh, we do?
Yeah, the boundary is defined.
We don't get to how activities up.
Right, you don't get to handle the, am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah, the district, the bound, the district has to be created.
And even once the assessment commission decides what benefit, you guys can even change those numbers.
Yeah, the challenge we have, though, in this area, is that these are the same residents who are being impacted by the sewer relining project, the water meter project, and I'm sure there's some other project that. We're, so again, we're we're back in the area that I really don't wanna go to, because I don't wanna keep hitting the same people up for assessment after assessment after assessment after assessment, it's just, that's just not right.
Right.
Well, Sharon, to go along with that, this truck route wouldn't have even been talked about if it wasn't for the reason why we're doing it, for the trucks in the back, right?
The reason why we're putting the truck route in is to get rid of that blind corner and keep the trucks where they should be.
Yeah, off residential roads.
I know, and so, you know, the benefit is to the trucks that use that road, the fact that the citizens and residents can use the road, well, sure, because it's there, but that's not the purpose of that road, and that's not always designed to benefit. They will get a, I mean.
I would agree with you a hundred percent, Sharon, so Lucas, how can we put boundaries on that to accommodate?
This is something that I think the the city should help, this is one of the ones I think the city should partially help pay for, or is this something, because wouldn't we have thought about this, would we put these commercial zones in and that type of stuff, or?
Well, and the city benefits a ton by having this road there, because what happened, how many times, how many times did a truck whip around this corner and take out a lift station?
Right.
I mean, we had to put barricades up intentionally, and then they just cut in front of them, so again, the rear really, the the impetus behind having this truck route put in.
Okay, dollars and cents, what kinda cost is this?
I'll go up two slides and say, if you would, please, I think it's, uh, there's a two options, there's two options, there's an asphalt option, and then there's a concrete option.
This is the asphalt option.
And and we're not making decisions on that tonight, we're just approving.
But asphalt option's about five hundred thousand, and here's the concrete, it's only different.
What with trucks?
Yeah, not much difference.
There's not a lot of difference, and I mean, that's just.
But better value going concrete versus asphalt?
Yeah.
For sure.
So what kinda bond is that a year?
Um, let's see here, I mean, we had it broken down, using all of those costs, it would be, oh, six thousand dollars and changed, if it was assessed equally now to all ninety seven of those homes identified, it probably wouldn't be, just because the, it's, would be much less on the north end, and it would get greater as it comes to the south.
Six thousand total, but a yearly payment on that?
Well, six thousand divided by however you want you wanna do it, fifteen or twenty years, I mean, say you did it ten years, it's six hundred bucks.
That's per household, right?
Yeah.
But you evenly, what is the tot, what would be the total?
Totally, exactly.
What what if the assessment only went to the to the direct benefit, which is the trucking companies, those companies that have heavy equipment that are coming down that road?
Then it'd probably be assessed behind over ten properties.
But then, this smaller number you go.
But that's really where the, but that's really who's benefiting.
Then their assessment goes up.
Period, but that's who's benefiting.
Yeah.
Can that be done?
Yes.
But my, then you're saying that if there's only four, takes two of them, and they can petition out of it.
But the city's one of them, we're one of the beneficiaries.
Well, you know what I'm saying, though, the fewer you go, the less it's going to take, and they can just petition out if the cost is too high.
Paul Nardini's been asking for this for.
Yeah, they I've, they've talked to me too about it.
What are they willing to pony up on this?
You know, likewise, what are we willing to?
I was told you'd put it in if it was just gravel, and I'm pretty sure you you guys don't wanna gravel there.
Right, so again, this is a conversation, what are we willing to put in, because we we want it, and what do they wanna put in?
So what they would be the.
Yeah, so maybe the city just has, if someone, whoever's portfolio it's in, just has discussion with those businesses and say.
This would be in Brian's, and to me, I I'd say because of the, the city would take a major, a major portion of half or something, and we put the assessment, plus if you're hitting mostly commercially, put the assessment on as far as you can, since we got low interest rates going.
And like you said, they really want it.
And they're the ones who are benefiting, the residents, it's not for them.
I would say talk to them.
Can they use it? Yeah.
I mean, Ryan came to my office a couple times and asked, what can we do to get their road in? I mean, they're, he's all over this, so I think the conversation with those guys will go a long way.
Because is this something that's getting done this year?
Like, if you hit, you hit, just what you've got in the map, though, you do, you do basically commercial and down into the industrial that's down there too, or, so you get it down into that industrial.
Yep.
Yeah, because there's access now for them that they didn't have.
Yeah.
How how many people, is that just one person that owns that?
I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Because I'm almost positive one person owns that big chunk.
Yes.
And I think that's that trust.
That's the trust, right, the dude, the guy from California.
So if you're gonna hit them, and they can petition out their stuff, because it's over, if it's a certain amount of property, if you own that, then you can petition out, it doesn't necessarily just have to be property owners.
But if we did that, if we moved forward and kept the assessment district as people, as he sold off that, by new owners, say, to turn that into industrial or something, or whatever could be assessed at that point, right?
You wanna drop that one off?
Is there a way to do that, that it can sold it off to more commercial developments or industrial, and they have access?
You just wanna do part of it? To do it later on?
Just like a feed, like we do with sewers, go hook up, we put a driveway.
Yeah, I don't know what the assessment commission's gonna do as far as how you're gonna assess it, if it's a footage or percentage.
Let's maybe have a couple conversations with the owners out there.
Yep, start that.
Do we wanna, in order to facilitate this, do we wanna approve the report tonight, then, just so we get the?
Yes.
Or what's your, what's your recommendation on that?
Well, if they wanna talk, I would say approve the report, and then maybe hold off on the resolution in necessity.
Yes.
That we don't have to publish that.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I was saying too.
Yep.
So, yeah.
And we can, we can tweak this this map, I mean, that's not set and still, that's just something that we, you know, we tried to.
You know the ultimate goal, what needs to get done, so I think we can.
Yeah.
I would just like to have a better idea of the map that we're gonna be putting in the form.
Yep.
And right now, it seems like we don't know.
So let's just approve the report, like you said, so.
So we'll approve her.
I move that we approve the engineer's report, but do not do the resolution.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Sharon do the second, David do the first.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. So that's what we'll do there, then. Okay.
So then should I put that on the agenda for, um, July tenth?
Yep.
Yeah, do the.
Well, I think, yeah, because we'll we'll wanna follow up to the conversations regarding talking with Ryan and.
Who's gonna have those conversations, is it?
Well, usually, it should be Brian, right?
Well, I was gonna say, does he have enough time, because we have, remember, we have Fourth of July holiday over there, and a lot of people, because then they might take the whole week off or something like that, so.
Well, then they'll just say, I have no update.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd say we can, we can at least try and get a few people feedback, and we'll see where we get on that, go from there. Okay, Lucas, what else we got here?
Um, you want fireworks ordinance or variance ordinance?
Do the fireworks one, we'll take them in order.
Okay, so I question what you guys wanted to do for this, I was under the impression that you wanted a fifty dollar minimum penalty in your ordinance?
Right, that's what we talked about last time.
But then I heard there's a resolution, so I need to make sure.
It was a resolution, we want a fifty dollar minimum, be a.
So not ordinance?
Nope.
No.
Right.
Didn't we do that? I thought we did.
Fee schedule, fee schedule.
Resolution, whatever.
Didn't we do that the last time we went through this?
We didn't, we didn't put a minimum.
Well, there's nothing, there's nothing in there right now.
It just said up to a thousand dollars.
No, there's nothing at all, it just reverts to the standard section one or two eleven, it doesn't, there is no penalty section right now.
But my minutes say the opposite.
Says that there's a resolution for, yeah, but what I'm saying is there's, there's no ordinance that has a penalty, yeah, there's a resolution. So what I'm wondering is do we want a penalty section in there that says that fee schedule language, like we did for, um.
Yeah, I guess I thought.
The land use?
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
So we'd say.
We should probably do that, so that we have a way to change that without.
So it'll say, like, any infraction of this section comes with a penalty as provided in a fee schedule.
Yes, yep.
But then my concern with that, though, is you should make that available to the police department, so they know.
Well, that was the purpose of trying to do this, was to have a minimum, so that they weren't having to try and have a call as to how much, because when we said up to a thousand dollars, that was our question, how do we know how much, if we're gonna give someone a ticket, what do we make it for? We don't wanna be the ones deciding.
So we can arrange this to have it say, I just have to, second change between first and second, or if we don't have to push or you can. And that way, there's at least a penalty section in that chapter.
You can go ahead. I can, I can take it, I'll take it.
I would say should, I would, I mean, I would think it should say, should be subject to a penalty without a dollar amount.
Okay.
And then in the.
Yep.
Fee schedule, the fee schedule would then say minimum fifty dollars, maximum a thousand.
So subject to a minimum penalty as determined by the city council.
And have it in that fee schedule, yeah.
Because I don't think you want the minimum in the ordinance, you just want the ordinance to say what it says and have the fee schedule separate, as we've done with the other ordinances.
Yeah, that's what we're gonna want, because that can be changed then over time with less hassle and having to redo the ordinance, fee schedules or.
So then take out or subject to the penalties set forth in section one oh two eleven, or keep that in there, because then at least that will bring you up to a thousand.
Which one takes precedence, though, if you have an aura in there?
I would say that. The penalty one.
What do you guys think?
I think it should be dollars and cents and that should be taken out, and a fee schedule states the minimum and the maximum.
Okay.
Yeah, just keep it simple, so we can change it.
Yep, sounds good to me.
Yeah, I think that's what we'll do.
So do you want this to be your first reading, or do you want to come back with first reading, July tenth?
You can come back with it, it's not gonna take effect right now anymore, so.
Come back with it.
Yep.
Okay, the next one I have is variance ordinance, and this one was presented to planning because it impacts, um, title four of the land use. And this one I sent to Ryan, hopefully. So what this one's doing is the planning commission was not comfortable with making the ultimate decision with, um, variances.
Seated in the list, so sorry, or is it this one? Or two thousand seventeen dash four?
Yep, that's it.
Okay.
Yeah, and so it also, this ordinance also takes out the zoning board of adjustment, because the only thing that they did before was variances, and that should have been removed when variances were switched to planning commission's authority. So it takes out that anywhere in the land use code, and then section three, I believe, is where it gets into variances. No, section. Six, so you scroll all the way down to section six, all these sections are just taking out board of adjustment and putting planning commission in there. And then that section gets rid of the board of adjustment, because like I said, all they have authority over is variances. And then there, that's the meat and potatoes of the ordinance, and it's just saying that the planning commission will, um, make a recommendation to the city council. So the variance will go to planning commission first, planning commission says either they approve, prove with conditions or deny it, then it goes to the city council for the final decision, just like all your other land use.
That's what you want, I suppose, that's kinda what we were talking about way back when, so, yeah. Understood, because I know we had that talk, so, you guys have any questions, I think this is pretty much what Penn Drayley talked about earlier, so, get a motion to accept. We, this is the first reading, right?
Yep, first reading.
First reading. So, okay, John, Dave, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll move on. Okay. Bond sale update, that is having to do with KPH, I'm assuming?
Yep, so this is for the Lost Rivers, um, so I talked to the bond company today, and they are, he said it's a six to eight week process, they are expediting it, so the city has funds available. Um, he said they're gonna sell off bonds, they're gonna start it on Monday, and he's thinking it's gonna take two or three weeks to sell off the bonds for this project because of the extent of the project, and so that's, it's gonna push funding for this project to your August seventh meeting. But like I said, they're gonna try to expedite it, so they're gonna try to make funds available sooner than that. I do have a concern that KPH is making pay requests already, so I asked Vance if the city had, um, funds available anywhere else to pay at least the subs. So coming to you with, is there any way that the city could, um, issue funds from the general fund to pay parts of the pay request for, um, June?
Yeah, the May request was.
May request.
Can we do that?
Would the city wanna do that?
And that's, you can do it, it's up to you guys.
How much money we talking?
The request is for one point five million.
Well, yeah.
So I already said.
And it's work, it's, it's work performed, there is a little bit in there for materials stored on hand, that's something I can review, I don't, I'm not.
Are we, are we behind on getting these bonds sold, or is this kinda typical timeline, and KPH is just kicking tail and getting it done early, or?
There's a lot of things that just added up where it just ended up taking.
A lot longer.
A lot longer, and so it is behind.
How much would be the subs? Do we have a breakdown of what subs or subs was KPH?
Uh, the bulk of it was KPH, most of it would be suppliers, uh, their precast concrete structures, the pipe suppliers and their materials, but most of the work has been done by them up to date, there's been a little bit of erosion control that was a subcontractor, and then, uh, some cleaning and calibrizing stuff, but the bulk of it has been theirs.
So if I remember correctly, they wanted to get going on this project quickly.
They did.
They really did on that, so we're not necess- I don't feel necessarily obligated, when they're wanting to get going and not all the documents are in place yet. There should have been probably a timeframe put down to make sure the bonds and all that is in process, correct?
Yeah, it's, it's been quick since it started.
Exactly, and I appreciate, don't get me wrong, being in construction, I appreciate that, getting stuff done, and I always believe in getting the subs paid.
I may have something, Jeff, can you go to the point, Jeff, please?
I would just like to comment on, uh, John's comment, they were, they were anxious to go, but they were under contract when they started work. And, and the contract is, I think, net thirty, so I think, you know, the, the city is behind, uh, based on what KPH is saying, so. Based on the, the wording of the contract, so.
Go ahead, Perry.
Do we have the deposit done from the developer that's supposed to be taken for fifty percent of the project before it starts? Do we have that deposit in place?
Vance?
Were you referring to the letter of credit?
Yep.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
So we do have that to fall back on, correct?
And I mean.
Trying to put, just.
The, the funding is there, as far as the city will get the funding, it's just not here right now, it's not here yet.
When are we anticipating having the funds from the sale of the bonds?
He's thinking the beginning of August, they're expediting, they're gonna try to get us funding, or the city funding by the end of July.
So what kind of draws gonna be come between now and then?
Another million.
That's coming when, that's coming at the end of this month?
Well, it would, the next estimate that we prepare would be in the July, for July, um, I haven't looked at the quantities exactly to see, but it, they finished up this sewer, finished up the water, most storm sewers in now, so the last, the previous estimate for the one and a half was the, all the water items, all the sewer items, this next one will be for all the storm sewer items, and there wasn't quite a bit of storm sewer piping on that.
They're gonna bring it forward, so you're talking, we'll see, it'll be on our potential consent agenda.
Yes.
July tenth.
Yes.
So in other cities, for reference, how do they handle similar situations?
Same situation as I'm bringing forward now, where they just try to come up with funds in the time being.
Sometimes you'll get an interim construction loan until your funding is solely in place, um, I don't have a whole lot of experience with that, but I have heard of some entities doing that.
Lucas, give me a little bit more on why, why this is delayed or not happened yet.
Um, like I said, a big one is the, the size of the project, and with smaller cities, you, smaller cities carry a lot of debt, and there's not a lot of, um, income, um, so they, it takes them longer, they say typically, like a bigger city can sell off these bonds in three to four days, but smaller cities, it's two to three weeks, so that plays in, um.
But there, but there's a delay, though, I mean, it sounds like the bonds should have been sold sooner.
Yeah, I mean, even when, whenever we issued the contract, I guess, you even go six to eight weeks out of that, what's that?
I have not made a comment yet.
So when the contract was made, or agreed upon, should the bonds have been requested at that time?
That's when they probably should start.
And they did, in this case, I think, because when did the contract get done, what, a month ago?
Well, it was, uh, April.
Oh, Lord.
Believe it was in April?
Three months.
Was when we did the construction agreement?
I have addressed this, what's happened in the past is weird. Naturally, you should have the money in place before you turn your first shovel or chair over, didn't happen. It, it's happened in the past as well, where I would take money out of the general fund, uh, I would use taxpayer money to throw at private enterprise. It's always worked out before, however, we're talking big ten dollars, and, um, if we don't do something, KPH would, would probably shut down, I wouldn't blame them, but, um, there's a risk here that this board has to think about before you, I mean, I'll write a check, but you gotta tell me to write it.
Yeah, that kinda comes into that whole deal too, where we, you know, we can't cover the one point five, know that, I mean, that's not, that ain't gonna happen. Um, and I don't wanna sit and get the city in a, a risk situation again financially right now, because, you know, the bonds aren't supposed to cover this.
And if, well, it, it, it probably won't work out just fine, or if it doesn't.
Right.
What I don't understand, if I'm being told two to three weeks, and we're talking two to three months, what happened and what's going on? That's my question.
Are you directing that to me, John?
I'm directing that to anybody who has an answer.
I'm sorry.
Numbers are delayed getting to the bonding company.
When were they sent in, exactly?
About a week ago.
How do we do that to expedite that?
Been, been in contact with the bonding company for two weeks to try to expedite this, so they are doing what they can.
So if it's two weeks, you've been in contact with them and you're saying it's normally two to three weeks, we might be a week out, best case?
No, they, he said they're not gonna sell till Monday.
Oh, next?
Yeah, they start selling the bonds on Monday, so then, yeah, you figure?
We, I think, you know, we're looking at the money in August before, approximately.
He said August seventh, and, cause that's.
Okay.
Will KPH work with us?
I got, I talked to KPH today and that's, I don't know.
Oh, and when are they, well, I don't think they want their money.
Yeah, exactly.
They're not gonna get a million point one, I can tell you that.
So I told him the situation, and they said they want to see when we started with the process.
Can you, I'm here in August, but I'm hearing bonds are being sold Monday, you saying?
I'm not sure why it takes, I'm not sure why it takes that long then.
Typically, John, it is a two month, it's a two month thing, in all the projects we've done over the years, it takes two months.
Okay, there's two things, one is the bonds being sold, and then B, when we actually receive funds back, is that what it is? So the bonds could be sold, are we guaranteed?
No.
Yeah, guaranteed sold.
So I guess I'm not clear, where did the ball get dropped, if it takes two months from April to now is two months, right? So somewhere in the beginning of the process, the ball got dropped, cause otherwise, we'd have the funding today.
If it's done in that six to eight week timeframe now.
What is that about a period or, or two stars?
I'm, I'm not real familiar with it, I was just kinda asking around the office today, trying to see how some other cities have handled this. A lot of cities will bond at the end of a project, they'll just cover it until it's done, and then bond when they know the actual construction costs versus based on estimated ones. You don't have the luxury with this being such a large project, so, uh, I was gonna talk to Lucas, maybe you knew anything about that, like interim construction loan, that the city would, if the city would be able to get something like that.
And how long it takes?
That, I, it's, it's through a bank, and I don't know where the best place is or what, I just, I just was asking for some suggestions around the office and whatever.
Can you come up with something, though?
Yeah, see, I don't know if we're in a position tonight to know what to.
And I can talk to John tomorrow and see what he suggests.
Yeah, cause I mean, we would just be guessing right now, we haven't talked to Vance, I, I mean.
It just came up, well, I knew it was gonna, I could see it coming.
Well, yeah, I know, but.
But anyway, um, if there was a dollar amount, and I think Lucas and I talked a little bit about this today, is there, is there a dollar, if there was a dollar amount, two to three hundred thousand that we threw at KPH, of my general fund, would you think that would, for lack of a better word, pass it by them?
And I would, I would have to ask.
We don't know, that's, that's what I mean.
And is this board gonna do that? That's the question, right?
I, I think we need to give them something, whether it's on our side or not, or whoever, we need to determine after this is over what happened and now put in place that we did push this very quickly through, so we need to, next time, stop and think about that, I guess.
And I guess we always, in the worst case, always have the letter of credit to fall back on, I guess.
But.
I mean, you don't wanna go there, but that's what it's there for.
You know, and so sort of thing.
Would we have the letter of credit to fall back on?
I was gonna say, is that really what that is for?
I'm not sure that that could be used in this case or not, or that's, uh, you need to.
I would sue him, doc.
Well, I'm not saying to go to it for the funding, but if you're going to a bank, wouldn't that be your collateral? For a short-term construction loan?
I don't know if they qualify that as collateral.
I, I have to think about that a second.
Yeah, I don't know. And how long does it take to go to a bank to try to get, I mean, you're talking millions of dollars, it's a lot.
Typically, banks' problem there is a credit, cause it's a liability on there, they don't like it, but, you know, if the, if there's assets behind it, it's not a problem, but. I'm not sure we're talking about the same thing here, though, right?
Is that art protection?
Yes.
Jack, yes.
Yeah.
But see, as, and, and as the, as lots are sold, whether it's four hundred or whatever it is, as lots are sold, I communicate with the bank and I reduce that letter of credit, and developers happy, we are happy, and the bank is happy.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
That's the flow of that thing.
Correct. Jack, you had a comment?
A couple things, uh, first about the letter of credit, the developers' agreement with the city, um, and when he development, uh, the letter of credit serves as collateral, um, in a default situation, on the backend, uh, when specials aren't paid in a timely matter. Um, so I, you know, based on the wording of the, of our letter of credit with our bank, and, uh, the developers' agreement with the city, the letter of credit is not, um, available, now that doesn't mean, you know, we couldn't talk to our bank. The, um, I also talked with, uh, uh, Patrick Hockett, uh, who, uh, from KPH today. You know, he indicated that the, that carrying, you know, three million, that they don't have a three million dollar line of, line of credit, um, so that, uh, payment was an issue for them, um, and I asked him what his capacity was, what his lending capacity was, um, through KPH. Um, you know, he doesn't, uh, I don't think that he was excited about talking with his own lending institution about, um, you know, paying suppliers or, uh, his employees, but, um, he did mention that, you know, with the contract, that, the construction contract, uh, one of his concerns was that if he does have to go take out a loan, um, to cover these items, um, the interest that he's going to pay is going to exceed the default interest that's in the construction contract with the city, and so he's, uh, he's concerned about the cost. You know, he, we talked about stopping work, he's not, I know he doesn't want to, um, they've got a lot of, uh, you know, they've got a a lot of people on site, this is a big project for them, and, and so they don't, uh, they probably don't have other jobs for that many people to take.
They've planned for it.
They've planned for it.
Yeah.
So stopping work isn't exciting for them, um, and that's not exciting for us, and that's not exciting for the city, so. I think they're, they'd be willing to work with us, um, you know, and I think it's just something that we need to come up with a plan. Uh, you know, it is what it is with, with the situation, um, but I think we need to. Um but I think we need to, you know, just come up with a plan and then communicate with them, you know.
My big, my big issue is, yeah, you got the one five doing out, and you have another million coming up.
Yeah, but that will have thirty days, and if they get us funds by the seventh, we'll be close. Okay. It's been very close, it's very close.
Yeah, it's gonna be enough to talk.
So to me, it's a multifaceted approach. We have to, as a city, come up with a dollar figure that we're gonna give them right now, as a good, as a, a, a.
Good faith?
Good faith, thank you, that's what I was looking for, good faith. Number two, I think, you need to go back to John and find out if there's anything we can do, Lucas, to speed this up. Number three, I think we need to contact our bank and, and see if there's another, you know, if we can get some incremental payments that side here is that we're gonna have to bridge these gaps.
Or working capital.
Yeah, something, you know, if we can give them something like the numbers that Vance had said to get started, and in another week or two weeks at the most, we can get another larger chunk. For even an interim, you know, we can, we can start putting some type of plan together like that to get us through, but. We just know right now, we do not have the ability to write a check for one point five, right? Is that what it is?
Yeah.
But if we can get half or a little bit more over the next couple of weeks to float him along, then that's a discussion that has to be mad, had with KPH as well. That's to me the approach.
Well, I mean, anytime you're working with any contractor, any vendor, and they have an outlay of cash.
Yep.
For supplies, for employees, I mean, it's not like they have a never ending pot of money either. So they're expecting to get paid, and so.
So I think what's gonna come about here is you guys are gonna have to have some more conversations to see what we can come up with.
Now, Winnie, be interested in helping out the situation?
I, um, I would talk with Tom and Tom Samuelson and.
Would you do that?
Absolutely. And I'll talk with our bank. Um you know, we'd like to uh make sure that. You know, KPH, they attacked the project, they've done a good job, so we wanna keep them happy.
Yeah, no, I, I'm not playing KPH at all.
No.
Right.
What, what I'm thinking here, guys, is maybe the, you, you guys have a conversation, and when it's time for us to get involved again, let's do that. But let's see what you, what we can, what we can come up with, and then let's get us back in the loop here so that we're.
But are we putting up, I mean, we can't spend money till the tenth now. That's.
But what can we say tonight?
I think we need to come up with a dollar figure.
What can I say tonight?
Well, we could call a special meeting too.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I have.
I'm, I, we go to the country for, on Friday for a check for a week, so I don't get available.
So what are other options along with that? Can we?
I think we need to.
Up to a certain dollar amount?
What can we, Vance is a two fifty, is a three hundred, that we'd be comfortable to give them a starting point?
Yeah, if nothing goes wrong.
Of course.
Uh I, I can't tell, sit here and tell you guys that that's gonna be right, uh the right thing to do. Could I come up with two hundred fifty thousand tomorrow? Probably. Is it the right thing to do? You answer that.
I think it is. I think it's good faith as a starting point. Unless somebody's telling me that these bonds are not gonna sell, what's our rating? We've never defaulted on loans before or anything like that, right?
We're, we're still under our bond capacity too.
Yeah, he didn't have any indication that they wouldn't sell.
But is this something for further discussion later on?
Well, I, well, I, I kind of agree with you there, John. It's part of the discussion maybe long, we go into the next project. I, I think we need to rethink contract start dates and all of those things to make sure that some of these other, this situation doesn't come up again. Because being on the hook for one point five million or two point five million and having no bonds sold is not the spot the city wants to be in.
I agree.
That's.
Vance is just, I'm gonna just double check with you. Would you be comfortable with this board totally to try and find two hundred fifty thousand dollars and see if that'll help? The thing is, where we don't know, John, in the okay suite, if we do the two hundred fifty thousand dollars, is that gonna be what they need? I mean, okay, it's good faith on our part, but is that gonna cover what we're talking about here to get, help this facilitate a lot? Do they need three hundred?
Well, I think that's where the conversation.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I don't know if we're in a position tonight to make a dollar.
I think we need to up to, up to a lot.
Up to a lot, I agree.
Well, I think if the conversation continues and it ends up being three hundred aside. And Vance has to come back and call a special meeting, it's for additional whatever, what do we think? I mean, again, are you able to find another fifty thousand or another hundred thousand in between? I mean, that's all.
I would say up to three hundred.
That, that, I mean, we're talking pulling that much money out.
I, I, I'd hate to say that fifty thousand makes this deal fall apart. I, I think that's, I mean, would you agree, Jack? There's no way fifty thousand is gonna make.
But that could make a difference between making payroll and not making payroll, to be honest with you.
That's what I mean.
Fifty grand, and you say, well, that's all I can give you, and then the rest will come in August. That's, you got a lot of payroll periods in between you. So fifty grand could.
Do we have the amount that we know that would passify them at this point?
They didn't say.
I mean, he's got suppliers he owes money to. Do we know how much all of those suppliers?
We do have the material on hand, yeah. We've received invoices for the materials on hand and we've.
They're just sitting there?
What's that?
They're just sitting there?
Well, now they've been installed since, but at this last, as of the last estimate, the bulk of the storm sewer hadn't been installed, but he had been getting invoices on it. So that was part of the material. And if you look back at the estimate from the first meeting in, in June, that's attached to that as an attachment. Um now, we would probably be deleting that line item as we're paying for it as it's installed.
Does we know the number?
The number of.
The do- dollar number for?
Uh if you can go, can you go back and look at that?
I can try and find it, yeah.
Yeah, it should be.
Materials.
I mean, I would think if nothing else, that's probably his big.